Okay, now it's time is six forty nine. I'm going to reconvene to the regular session. And I could take ten minutes recess and we'll reconvene back the open session at seven p.m. Yeah, as I can confirm that as a result of the executive session, no action needs to be taken. Thanks.
I just wanted to make sure that we were all clear on what our thought process was. Thought process was at the time because basically you were saying is the amount that we approved is going to be that amount unless there's a change that's required by the town.
That is our understanding.
If TechStop finds that it's going to take more, that's on them.
That is our understanding.
Good, thanks.
It's 10% each, right? What are the numbers they come up with?
Yes.
It's 10% of what they come up with. Well, the way this $91,000 figure was put together was based on what their estimate was, what the cost of the bridge replacement of the bridge was going to be. So when this was presented to us, we had the requirement through the agreement, through the original, maybe wrong here, Susan's, the AFA, advanced funding agreement, that we would pay 10% of what their estimated cost was and that got you to the 91163. Well, and that's what we voted for and we did that on the basis of, as we were told that particular night, that that number is cast in stone once we did it. That's why we did it so quickly. Provided there's no changes that are pushed forward by the town. I just want to be sure that when this agreement comes back, it now says estimated, so is that number going to go up even though if TechBat goes and says, oh, wait a minute, it's going to be $3 million, your $3 million is now 10% of that, so now we've got to come up with another $210,000.
That's us.
Yeah, so our understanding, and I'm using those words very intentionally, our understanding is that we're going to pay 10% and it wouldn't exceed the amount that their original estimate was and that this word is being added in the event that the scope of the project creeps at all, right away acquisition, things like that. However, I mean, I'm using those words. It's my understanding for a reason, which is, I mean, we're still only paying for 10% of the bridge no matter what, unless we add to it. So our understanding is, and we were told point blank, that it would be the original estimate of the cost of the bridge. So that is what we were told and that's what we're conveying to you.
And thank you, Susan. You've explained it exactly the way I'm thinking and to be real honest with you, we know we need to have the bridge replaced. Even if it came back at $3 million, we're probably still going to come up with the $210,000 because we got a bridge for 10% of what the cost was. We just have to figure out where we're going to come up with money for it, that's all.
Are there additional discussions on this item number four? So Mr. Egan, there are no changes. We're just asking for five.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve item number four as presented? So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Egan, seconded by Mr. Finch to approve item number four as presented. Everyone heard the motion?
Yes.
Are you ready to move on to the next item? That's the public forum. This is the time members of the audience may come forward and speak to the council on any matter other than personal matters or legal matters or items on the agenda. If there are anyone from the members of the audience who'd like to come forward, please do so. Or if you're calling in using Zoom, you may raise your hand. Now one from the members of the audience is coming forward.
We do have one attendee that's raising their hand.
Okay.
William Kearney, I've unmuted you.
Mr. Kearney, you're on. Go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please.
Can y'all hear me?
Just barely.
Okay. Can you hear me better?
Much better. Thank you.
My name is William Kearney and I live at 105B Town East Boulevard. And, you know, it's most, well, first of all, good evening to y'all, the council and the town staff and everybody streaming. So I've lived in Sunnyvale here for 40 years, as most people know. Y'all can still hear me, okay?
Yes.
Okay. And so I wanted to bring forth before the council, I have a little bit of a frustration with the noise levels from the restaurant next door. On Fridays and Saturday nights, the music is so loud, I can hear it in every room in my house. This Friday, I could hear the bass in every room. My son was watching Star Wars and had surround sound on, the bass turned off, and I could still hear the bass over him watching the surround sound. And this is just an ongoing issue that is just really frustrating. And the legal limit, this Friday, on my unregistered, my uncertified device, I was getting 55 decibels in my dining room, right at my table. And it's just ridiculous. And there's, you know, when this restaurant went in, it was, you know, a family restaurant and, you know, there was like this little stage in the plans that was size of like a parking spot and a half. And, you know, then after it was passed, they came back and, you know, they took up about five parking spots under a covered awning and turned it into the big stage. And, you know, now there's, they got speakers on the, attached to the big pecan tree that are higher than the wall. You know, it's just, it sounds like spring break over there. And it's just been affecting me in a very negative way. I shouldn't be forced to have to listen to what somebody determines I should listen to in my house. So for about eight, you know, it was, it started off like this at the restaurant and I kind of let it go for a while because it was new and everything. But then, you know, about eight months, I've been calling in on it and filing complaints with the sheriff's department, you know, and I just get the runaround. They, I've been told that, you know, they don't have a decibel meter. My decibel meter that I ordered up from Amazon is, it's not certified and they can't get one. They don't know how they can't get one in eight months. That's just beside them. And, or they just don't want to. And it's very intrusive. And so I'm needing to, I'm asking for the council's help with this. So it's, it's just, it's just really bad. And, you know, I've asked, you know, and like they, Saturday night, they turned it down and it was at a good level. And, you know, you can go outside and still hear it, but, you know, I can't hear it in my house. So I just don't know why the sheriff's department refuses to enforce certain codes. And then they were told that it was above, the deputy hall said it was above his head, you know, and there's nothing he can do. And basically to stop calling. I was basically told to stop calling.
Mr. Kearney, we heard you. I remember that was your complaint when the proposal came. So let's give our SPD a chance and Susan a chance, Mr. Cooper, a chance to work it. And thank you for bringing this attention.
Okay, thank you.
Joseph, anyone else on the line?
What was that?
No, that's it.
Okay. If no one else, I can do close the public forum. Moving on to consent agenda items. Council, there are two items on the consent agenda, item number three and four. Would anyone like to remove any of the items from the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to remove item four. I've got a question about the agreement and highlighted word in that agreement.
Anyone else? If there are none, can I have a motion to approve consent agenda item three as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Allen for a second. Second by Enrich to approve consent agenda item three as presented. Everyone heard the motion? All in favor signify. All opposed, motion pass 7-0. Mr. Egan, item number four, please.
Mayor, on the first page of the resolution, looks like the last, whereas paragraph, it was the term estimated amount of 9116302. Term estimated was highlighted or is highlighted. I was under the impression when we passed that original $91,000 or 10%, that that was going to be the maximum that we would pay at that time. And if we say estimated here, does that have an impact on what the future cost of the bridge is going to be?
So we were in the process of signing our AFA and it was sent from this TechStop office to the state for approval and it came back from the state with that word added. So Lyle filed it up with them. You know, I think until they get to that point and see if we add additional aspects to the project, I think that's why they added the word estimated because if we ask them to make it wider, if we help them incorporate the water line into the project, different things that could affect the cost, then that will be on us. So I think that that was the reason for adding the estimated word.
Okay. And I just wanted to make sure that we were all clear on what our thought process was at the time because basically you were saying is the amount that we approved is going to be that amount unless there's a change that's required by the town.
That is our understanding.
If TechStop finds that it's going to take more, that's on them.
That is our understanding.
Good, thanks. twenty dash fourteen, an ordinance amending the town unified development ordinance duly passed by the town council on March twenty-six, twenty-eighteen, as amended from time to time, so as to amend section three point oh six oh eight, design standard specifically section three point oh six or eight EB garage orientation and access as well as any other associated sections.
Mr. Jackson?
Mayor of Town Council?
Good evening.
Evening. Um, as you know, this is the second reading of this proposed text amendment to our garage and or garage orientation and access standards. Um, this is addressing the J-drive, uh, site entry, uh, uh, design aesthetics, um, and amending that, that, that design criteria to, um, as attached in the, in the memo. Uh, at the last meeting, uh, it was noted that there was some verbiage that was missing in the ordinance, uh, addressing, um, single-family structures that were, um, to be considered lawfully, uh, conforming, um, prior to this, uh, amendment. And that language was added by our town attorney. Um, with that being said, uh, town staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. So this is a, a public um, hearing agenda. So I'm going to call for public comments. If there are anyone from the members of the audience who'd like to come forward and speak to the council, you may please do so at this time, or anyone calling in through Zoom would like to raise their hand, please do so. Now one from the members, the audience is coming forward. Joseph, anyone raising their hand?
No one's raising their hand.
No hands raised, so I'm going to close the public comments. Council, are there any discussions or questions on item number five?
Mayor Rashad, I have one question, can you show me the page or the paragraph for that word you want to change that? I don't know that it's highlighted here, so I was looking for that.
It was added in the actual ordinance by our town attorney, um, under section two, the a- actual verbiage. Um, it's on page twenty of the packet. I can, uh, share my screen.
From last time, Rashad, that's what Mr. Allen is talking. Is that a change from last time or is it same as last time?
It's a change, if you look at under garage setback and look at number four, I mean, number, I'm sorry, um, six, under garage setback.
Yeah.
Says any single-family structure lawfully existing on July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty shall be here, hereafter deemed a lawful structure for purposes of this section.
I found it, thanks Rashad.
You got it?
No problem.
Are there additional questions or discussions on this topic? Okay, if there are none, I'm going to call for a motion on item number five.
I'll make a motion to adopt, approve, item number five as presented.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Allen, seconded by Mr. Finch to adopt or approve item number five as presented. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? If not, all in favor signify? All opposed, motion pass seven oh. Thank you very much, Rashad, moving on to item number six. Hold a public hearing, discuss, consider and act upon accepting the twenty nineteen consumer conference report, water quality report. Mr. Creed?
Yes, mayor and council, uh, every year we submit a water quality report. Uh, and part of that, uh, requirement is to have a public hearing to allow for questions or input or anything anyone wants to say about the water quality report. This year's was, uh, relatively unremarkable, there's nothing in here that, that should be a surprise or, or, um, uh, no violations or anything like that, it all looks good. So if y'all have any questions or if anyone here has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Creed, I'm going to open up for public comments. If there are anyone from the members of the audience who'd like to come forward and speak to the council, you may do so at this time. Or if you're calling in via Zoom, you may raise your hand. Now one from the members of the audience is coming forward. Joseph, anyone raising their hand?
No hands.
No hands raised, so I'm going to close the public comments. Council, are there any questions from Mr. Creed or any discussions on item number six? Okay, if there are none, uh, I'm going to call for a motion on item number six.
Mayor, make a motion to approve item number six as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Allen, seconded by Mr. Finch to approve item number six as presented. Everyone heard the motion? Additional discussions, all in favor signify? All opposed, motion pass seven oh. Mr. Creed, thank you.
Thank you.
Two people same time. Maybe just a, maybe just, maybe, maybe just a.
I second.
Sound travels, shorter distance. Item number seven, discussion and action items, item number seven, discuss, consider and act upon a request by Republic Services for the annual fee increase as allowed per the approved contract. Ms. Capri?
Mayor and council, um, you have a contract with Republic Services that began on August first, twenty-seventeen and extends through July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Um, provision four point three A in the contract provides for annual fixed increases of one and one-half percent for residential and three percent for commercial customers. So this action is just accepting that rate increase. And you can see the resulting rate, um, of seventeen sixty-seven before sales tax for residential and commercial total of twenty-three ninety-one. Uh, staff obviously recommends approval based upon the adopted contract.
Okay, I'm going to call for public comments, if anyone from the members of the audience would like to speak to the council, you may please come forward, or if you're calling in via Zoom, you may raise your hand. Now one is coming forward from the members of the audience. Uh, Joseph, anyone raising their hand?
No hands.
No hands raised, so I'm going to close the public comments. Council, are there any questions on item number seven? And discussions? Okay, if none, I'm going to call for a motion on item number seven. Motion made by Mr. Freeman to approve item number seven, for the second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Clark. Everyone heard the motion? The additional discussions? If none, all in favor signify? All opposed, motion pass seven oh. Thank you. Moving on to item number eight, discuss, consider and act upon the capital improvement plan, CIP, to be adopted for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget year. I'm going to call Ms. Capri.
Yes, sir, um, Lyle is actually going to present this item, but we do have a PowerPoint, if Joseph, you can bring that up.
Good evening, Ms. Jenkins.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Uh, I'll give Joseph just a moment to get that back, hold it up. One moment, I'll bring it up. Good to go. Uh, yes, sir, again, Mr. Mayor, council, good evening. Uh, just want to run kind of real briefly. I would set this up this year. Okay, sorry about that, I think this one's coming in a little bit better. Um, I guess firstly, I would just like to mention that the CIP committee uh, consisted of a number of the town's residents, some of y'all on the council, and then of course, staff and the leadership team, we all put, worked together to put this program together. Uh, the membership of the committee was essentially the same as from last year. Just, um, Joseph, could you leave the slide, please? Next slide, there you go. Um, basic methodology we used, first of all, staff went through and identified a list of projects that we felt were worthy of consideration. Put together a initial scoring, uh, sixty percent of the scoring was based on the town's strategic goals and then forty percent were based on more strictly technical aspects. Uh, then that was averaged together, using that ratio to come up with the staff score. Next slide, please. Uh, we then held multiple meetings, uh, first with staff and then with the overall committee to, uh, evaluate everything, discuss the projects individually and then, uh, discussing the cost of each project. We then proceeded ahead to have, uh, the CIP committee rank the projects according to how they felt was most appropriate for the town's attention. Next slide, please. Uh, once all that was done, uh, again, the, the staff had their rankings, the committee had their rankings. We then averaged that together and came up with a top ten project list, which you can see, um, on the, on the attached slide. Uh, Collins Road Phase Two being number one. Secondly, was the proposed right-of-way contribution for the upcoming US Highway eighty project. Uh, the third project was site acquisition for a new animal control facility. Number four, we called it intersection improvements, basically what that would consist of is just a uh, a, a pool of money set aside for targeted, smaller, quick projects at various small locations in and around the town uh, where various visibility problems are currently in existence. Number five is the community center. Number six was the replacement of the existing eight-inch water line in Barnes Bridge Road between Beltline Road and Collins. Number seven was construction of said animal control facility. Number eight, the downtown development project, which would be located just right across the street here from town hall. Number nine is reconstruction of Clay Road from Collins to Long Creek. And then finally, number ten is the PSA with Dallas County to overlay trip road between Beltline Road and the Falls. Um, next slide, please. Once we came up with that list, then the committee was asked to vote on their tolerance of issuance for debt for the coming year. As you can see, the majority of the committee voted for a willingness to issue debt for up to fifteen million dollars. Um, and then the final slide on the presentation, or excuse me, the final two slides are a budgetary analysis of how we could make that fifteen million dollars happen. Um, but as I say, kind of the, the core ranking is what I showed you before, where has the top ten ranking of projects, uh, as the committee and as the staff came up. So with all that having been said, I would like to give you all the opportunity to answer any questions.
Let me open up for public, I'll come back to the council in a second. Uh, if anyone from the members of the audience like to ask a question about this item, uh, please come forward. If you're calling in via Zoom, uh, please raise your hand. Now one is coming from the audience, uh, Joseph, anyone raising their hand?
No hands.
No hands raised, we can open up a, uh, council discussion. Uh, first of all, I want to say, uh, thank you to all the CIP committee members and at least we've got a couple of council members and many citizens who may or may not be listening in. This is a lot of work and the staff did a lot of work. And the last year, we set the, the, the approach and the strategy, which is great. It's sort of kind of building on it, but this takes time. Been through some of this meeting last year, it's a lot of work, so appreciate everybody who worked hard on it. Uh, so the, the committee you said has a tolerance of additional fifteen million dollar debt is the, that's the tolerance level of the committee, correct? Right. And the list here shown. Can you go back to the previous chart for me?
Yes, sir, so if I could just interject.
Yes.
So if you focus, um, on the peach-colored, Joseph, go back like a couple of slides. Yes, so that is the top ten list for the committee. And so, you know, our recommendation on this plan is that we focus on those top ten projects. Uh, you know, some of them, we really just can't take financial action because they're not ready for financial action yet. Um, some of them were waiting for other financial things to come together. So from a project standpoint, those, if you, you know, were to adopt this plan, those ten would move into our project matrix and we would work those projects and get them to a point. But when you translated that for purposes of our charter, you have to adopt a CIP budget. Well, these ten projects cost more than fifteen million dollars, which is the tolerance level. So in order to make it work with the budget, we had to reorder them a little bit to piece them together just for purposes of adopting the budget, so, um, you know, but really, we're going to be working on this top ten list and then we'll see which ones get to the point of being able to be financed. Does that make sense?
So let me, let me state it a little bit differently, as I understood, so this is the top ten. The tolerance level for the CIP committee is fifty million dollars. That does not mean we are going to go spend the money, but that is their tolerance limit, a group of citizens coming. So as we walk through this set, there may be other funding mechanisms rather than just the debt, so, so some of this of these ten projects will come forward and staff will have more data and you'll come back to council with these specific.
For each and every part.
Right now, you're looking for just an overall thumbs up approval on the path the committee has taken, okay? So if anyone is completely disagree with this, this is the time to speak.
Yes, sir.
Council, any questions? Uh, Mr. Clark, so?
Right, so I was on the CIP committee and first of all, I want to thank everybody that participated, uh, volunteered, participated on the, on the committee's law work and thank you to the staff for all the law work. Um, just to add on to what you and Susan were saying, you know, my, my interpretation of this, my, my thoughts on this are, um, you know, we're, we're not wanting to take out fifteen million dollars worth of debt right now. You know, this is more long-term, just planning and over, over time.
Five years.
Exactly, over the next five, five years, you know? And it's, I think this will be fluid because new projects will come up, new problems that we'll have to overcome. And so, you know, I think this, this would be a list that would, um, change over time, you know, it's a, it's definitely, um, dynamic, a dynamic list. Um, but, you know, having worked a lot on this, you know, I, I, I'm happy with the ten that we've come up with and I think, you know, there's a lot of thought into all these different ideas and whatnot, so I'm glad to, glad to see this move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Are there additional questions or discussions on this agenda item? Can be some questions. Okay.
Uh, Mr. Egan? I just want to make a comment that I made with you and Susan. Um, just maybe from the fifty thousand foot level, even though this is probably at the forty-nine thousand foot level, based on what Susan's comment just was, but I hearken back to statement made by one of the other members of the council last year when we were talking about budget dollars. And we need to figure out what needs are and what wants are. Um, when I looked at the top ten objects or the top ten items, uh, that it was shaken down to, and I appreciate all the work and the effort that people went through to get there. I looked at the eight million dollars that it was going to take to put in a community center, which is half of that fifteen million dollars that was being looked for. And I'm going, uh, you know, that's a want, that's not a need. I, I totally understand it, I've, I've got people that ask me, where's our dirt bike trails? And, and where's our dirt walking trails? But then you also have people that want paved walking trails and they want paved bike trails. You can't be everything to everybody. But when I looked at the way that broke down, and again, I'm not against a community center, although we do have a few buildings in town that could be used as community centers today, for standing, they exist. I think there needs to be better synergy between the different entities maybe to, uh, begin utilizing those facilities because recognizing the size of our town today, recognizing what the size of our town will be at build-out, can we, and I don't. Can we, and I don't, I don't know, because I didn't attend any of the meetings on it, I kind of hope that people stood back and looked at some of these and looked at what the costs were. And it's one thing to build the building, because you can go out and get funding from various different sources, do bonds, and what, things like that. But now you've got the operating and maintenance costs of those facilities that don't ever really show up until it comes to the budget time for that future, for whenever that item becomes an eventuality. So I just, I just wanted to comment that, not against that, but I think that we really need to evaluate our priorities in consideration of these unprecedented times we are in right now. And I hate to say that, because it's a lot like when you hear on the, in the medias and in all the commercials, that this is the most important election we'll ever have. Well, every one of them is the most important election we'll ever have. But in this particular case, I just think that we need to take into consideration the real unknown that we are venturing into as a society, both as Sunnyvale and as the town and the world as a whole. And let's do the things that take care of the health and the welfare of the citizens. Not saying that a community center is not social, psychological help, but I'd rather have those water lines replaced, the stop signs put in, that make sure, or at least help in those day-to-day activities that we go through, that our citizens and those coming through our town remain healthy. Thanks.
Good point, Mr. Egan. Are there additional discussions? Okay, if there are none, I am going to call for a motion on item number eight.
Motion to approve item number eight.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Clark, and second by Mr. Finch to approve item number eight. Are there additional discussions or comments? If there are none, all in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed seven of. Again, once again, really, staff, Lyle, Rashad, Susan, and everybody else, and Alyssa as a major, and in this, in this, many, many other people. So thank you, Phyllis. Everybody, appreciate everything you did for this one. We didn't have this, this was a great finding. Moving on to item number nine, discuss, consider, and act upon the first reading of ordinance twenty-fiveteen, an ordinance of the town of Sunnyvale, Texas, amending chapter four-point-five, emergency services, article four-point-five, two-hundred-nine-one-one service, section four-point-five-two-oh-one, and four-point-five-two-oh-four, of the code of ordinance, letter definitions, restrictions, and limitations on nine-one-one service fees, providing for savings, durability, and setting an effective date. Susan, would I be you?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Capri, good evening.
Mayor and council, this is really just to clean up. We previously adopted this ordinance, this is part of our implementation for our police department and dispatch, but our attorney worked on this ordinance, but then following adoption, did further legal review and consultation with the state CSEC committee, and they had some recommendations, so we're just amending it to follow the recommendations. So I don't think there's anything really substantive, the amount of the fees is staying the same, so I ask for your approval of this item.
Thank you, Mr. Capri. I'm going to call for public comments on item number nine. If anyone from the members of the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council, you may do so at this time, or if you're calling in via Zoom, please raise your hand to ask a question or make a comment. Nowhere is coming forward from the chamber. Joseph, anyone raising their hand?
No hands.
Your hands raised, when I can do close the public comments. Council, are there any questions or discussions on item number nine? If there are none, I call for a motion. Motion made by Mr. Eldridge, second by Mr. Freeman to approve item number nine as presenter. Have you heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? There are none, all in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed seven of. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number ten, discuss, consider, and act upon the first reading of ordinance twenty-eighteen, and ordinance amending ordinance nineteen twenty-two, which made appropriations for the support of the town of Sunnyvale for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty-nineteen, and ending September thirtieth, twenty-twenty, and amending the annual budget to the town of Sunnyvale for the twenty nineteen, twenty-twenty fiscal year. This happens.
Good evening, mayor and council. This packet, this presentation serves two purposes. Number one is to amend the current year budget, and number two, to introduce, further introduce the twenty twenty, twenty-twenty-one proposed budget. Next slide. This is the current budget schedule, and as sometimes happens to us, we get information as we're walking in this door. And we've gotten some information over the last week that Dallas County and the Dallas County Appraisal District has moved up some of the dates for information that is critical and required for us to adopt our tax rate. So this budget schedule will be changed, and it will move into September, and we'll get that to you as soon as we have it updated. And we'll go into that a little bit more on another topic here. The next slide. These are the funds that we have some amendments or true-ups. The debt service, this edit is to reflect the bond proceeds, debt payments, and issuance cost related to the twenty nineteen, twenty-twenty certificates of obligation to fund identified CIP projects. Related to that, the CIP fund, this edit is to reflect the estimated current year costs of projects funded by the above COs, and to present the estimated five-year old board of identified projects as required by the town charter. The four A EDC, this edit is to reflect the estimated remaining revenues and expenses to further approve. That's the solution of the four A. Special revenue, this edit is to reflect donations, such as the Atmos Energy donation and a donation made to the animal control grants. We received some ambulance billing grants in support of EMS medical response for the fire department, and the effort and the effects of the court-related fees affected by COVID-19. Our, a part of our citations by state law is fees that will support court security and court technology. And because we haven't been writing very many tickets, we reduced the revenue from those fees. The next slide. I know that this slide is very busy, but we have a lot going on, and this is one way that we keep track of everything. So these are all of your funds, and it includes your CIP projects. It tells you how much money you start with, what your expenses and revenues are expected to be, any bond proceeds, any transfers in, and where are you going to end. And this is the current year, where we believe each one of these funds will end for the current year.
Is there any elements for the green, orange, and blue color, or this is just?
That is just so that I can make sure if it's transferring out from one fund, it's transferring into another. This was part of the recommendation from the auditors, I think, was to kind of have this walk forward of how these transfers come from one fund and go to another.
We can hear you.
Sorry, sir. Because we see this a lot, I just want to make sure that it's kind of clear to you, this PowerPoint is covering two different, it's covering two different agenda items. So these parts that she just went over are the budget amendment parts. So that's the item that we're on right now, but she'll use this, she'll move forward in this PowerPoint to cover the next agenda item. So I just wanted to kind of draw a line in the sand that this is for the budget amendment piece. And this is us truing up what we're doing in the current fiscal year. It's for, the reason it's in one PowerPoint is because for us, it all goes together because we can't start on the next budget if we don't fix the current.
And next slide, please. Oh, no, we need to stop here, I believe, and act on the ordinance to amend the current nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
That's just the truing of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
Yes, sir. And.
Thank you for the, I was asking Susan, I got a little bit confused about it.
Yes, and if you go to the detail, the encode detail, it's going to walk you forward from last year, your original budget this year, your amended budget this year, your actual year-to-date this year, and your proposed budget. So that one document is covering three years.
So let's, let's hold here, right? So I'm going to open up for public comments. If anyone from the members of the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council on item number ten, please come forward. If you're calling in via Zoom, please raise your hand to discuss this item. Nowhere is coming forward from the members of the audience. Joseph, anyone raising their hand?
No hands.
Your hands raised, so I can do close the public comments. Council, are there any discussions or questions on item number ten?
Mayor, I have a question. Is the presentation stopping at this one, or are we going to talk about the slides that are following?
We're going to move forward with the slides.
Thank you. Additional questions on item number ten, comments? If there are none, I'm going to call for a motion on item number nine, item number ten, sorry. Motion made by Mr. Eldridge to approve item number ten as presenter. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Finch. Have you heard the motion? Additional discussions? There are none, all in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed. Item number ten is approved, seven of. Moving on to item number eleven, discuss, consider the proposed budget presentation with the focus on the estimated certified appraisal rolls received from D-CAD and potential tax rate, and receive updates the proposed draft budget, including supplemental request. This happens.
Mayor and council, I placed on your views the letter that we received from the Dallas, Dallas County Central Appraisal District, indicating that they are providing an estimated certification. If you look at that certification and compare it to last year, it is much lower. And the reason that it is much lower is because they've had record amounts of protests, that they have not been able to work through the system. The downside to this is that we will not get those certified rolls until August twentieth. That is almost a month later than in previous years. So when I made the statement at the beginning that we're having to extend our budget calendar, this is one of the reasons why. So we used, we are still using for budget purposes, and this is, could you go to the next slide for me, Joseph? Thank you. This is one of the challenges that we have right now, because with what D-CAD has told us up until the point where they removed the protest from our certified rolls, we were up twelve, fifteen percent. I still think that we're going to come in somewhere up around nine percent, and that was, that is what I have based our proposed budget on. So until we get those certified rolls, that is a best guess on my part, and it is not supported by this estimated certified roll.
So nine percent increase to the base, from twenty nineteen to twenty.
Right, if you look at the number that I placed up there for you for two thousand nineteen, I'm saying that your taxable value should be around nine percent higher than that. So having said that, your proposed budget is still very much a work in progress. There's still things that are coming in, information is coming in, whether it's participation with Tech Start on the Highway eighty right-of-way project. So we still have some things coming in, so this, we will continue to bring it back to you. We will continue to update it with the latest and greatest information. So this is not the final document, we just want to take you on this journey with us, really, to get to what we need for twenty twenty-one. So this, this slide here, again, is, is just a best estimate on the, on the part of staff, and it shows you, again, where you'll end up on a cash basis at the end of twenty twenty-one. The next slide. These are our general fund supplementals. These are not included in proposed budget at this time. If we were to fund all of these supplementals, we would still have ninety thousand dollars more in revenue than we do in expenses, based on my assumptions, all of our assumptions. Again, we have a couple of things that are facing us, and one of them is that Tech Start eighty expansion that could change that situation for us. So do you have any questions about the supplementals? You've seen these before.
Subits?
Quick question, this is about, just want to back up for a second, maybe to your twenty twenty-one sheet, just to verify, make sure I understand, since the person that only asks this question is not here anymore. Ending fund amount, so in reserves, we'll have in general fund, four-point-nine, or right at five million, based on what your estimates are, is that right?
Correct.
And then three million in the water fund, just want to make sure I understand that right.
That, that would be straight working capital.
Thank you. And then I just want to clarify again, your statement with, even with all these supplement adds, based on your, we know conservative estimates, we'll still have around, did you say thirty thousand?
Yeah, if you look at the very top there, what it tells you is that even if you put the supplemental in there, you're going to have eighty-four thousand.
Got you.
Five twenty-five left over.
And if I can just, the mayor had asked me to address two of the supplementals. One of them was bilingual pay certification, and we will be removing that from the list. Upon research, I found that it didn't hold up to benchmark scrutiny, so we are going to remove that from the supplementalist, which is how, why she said ninety thousand instead of eighty-four thousand. And then her comment about the ninety thousand and the Tech Start project, Lyle and I were contacted by Tech Start on the Highway eighty project, and they are asking us to move forward with our AFA on that project. It's a little over six hundred thousand dollars. And then as we've done on others, typically, they will allow you to do that over five years, so that's about a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars a year. So that ninety thousand will, you know, we'll be able to close that gap and hopefully fund that project next year. And then you also asked about the operation number of days. In one of our prior meetings in the PowerPoint, we had talked about making sure we had six months, or, yeah, six months of operating capital in reserve, but we'll actually have a slight bit more than that. And so we also are looking at using some of that to fund that, that Highway eighty project as well. So we'll, you know, as this kind of winds down, we'll be working those numbers at the last minute, as we get closer and get a little more firm numbers on our values. But that's why we're going to kick that adoption date out, so that we get closer, because, you know, they extended the deadline for protests this year, which moved everything back. So we really want to wait until we get closer to the actual certified values to propose a tax rate. As it stands now, if all of the estimates that both As it stands now, if all of the estimates that both D C A and Liz are projecting, we think the tax rate will be relatively flat. But if it were to be adopted now based upon what we're getting with the protests, it definitely would have to go up. So we want to see how this starts playing out before we move forward any farther. The other supplemental you all had asked about was the question of long-term disability. And I did want to just bring that information back for your consideration. The base quote was twelve thousand four hundred and seventy one dollars. There's some like gross ups. If you, and then the, the base plan for if we did it as a gross up, and this is something, and I'm going to hand the mic over to you, Councilmember Freeman, since this was something that you had recommended. The base cost of that is thirteen thousand one seventy five, so it's not even a thousand dollars more in the premium cost. But then we'd have to gross up the paychecks. So the total cost becomes twenty two thousand three sixty two versus sixteen thousand. So it's about six thousand, seven thousand dollars more if we do the gross up method versus doing it pre-tax. And I think your point was that if we do the gross up method, then when they get the benefit, it's not taxed. Is that correct? Okay, so you know, there's a, a cost difference. There's also, the other thing is the staff would have to calculate it for each and every employee because each and every employee's premium is different. So there's a little concern about people grossing up their pay and then they're getting to the top of their pay scales through this versus, and you know, they go over. So there's some administrative concerns. But I did want to just bring this back to you and we can go either direction on the supplemental.
Are we done here? I'm going to open the public comments that you want to stop and discuss here. Okay, Mr. Finch, okay, Mr. Finch, go ahead. Let's ask the council questions. Mr. Finch?
Thank you for the explanation, Susan. I do have some question about, once you were looking at adding, depending on which route we go, between sixteen and twenty two thousand dollars of cost. In benchmarking, I know in private sector like for me, I know it's different in different sectors. So that's a question for me. If I want, employees want long-term disability, it's partial pay, share the cost. I'm curious about, we're covering the full cost of this benefit, so it seems for employees. Is that right? Is that what you recommend?
Yes, sir. And if you recall, I did send you a spreadsheet where I benchmarked this particular benefit against all of our benchmark cities that we do for everything. We use the same cities for all of our benchmarks. And this was one where we had the lowest benefit of any of the benchmark cities. So that was what prompted us to go ahead and put it on the supplemental. And then it's also what prompted me to remove the bilingual certification pays because it didn't hold up to that comparison.
So this is completely paid by the town or employees participate in the?
Yeah, it, it's paid by the council.
Zero expense for the employees?
That's correct. And it's twenty two thousand. And I did want to add, you know, this doesn't get to Councilman Finch's concern about rolling forward expenses. But in the current year, we're actually received a notice that we're getting a rebate of seventeen thousand dollars to our T M L premium and we'll get it each month as a credit, or no, actually as a payment to us. And it's because our utilization was lower than the average. So that's something that the employees by participating in preventative health services and just maintaining their health, we're getting that kind of a credit back every month. So it will almost cover the cost of this benefit that we would be adding. That's correct. That's what I'm saying is it doesn't address his concern about roll forward, but for the given year, it will cover that cost.
I mean, I'm all about, I want to be competitive and I want us to give benefits for employees. Do worry about as we add and as we do things that we consider totality of adding. Right now it's twenty two thousand. Going back to your benchmarking, forgive me for not having that, but you said we scored the lowest and does that mean that everybody else operated and we didn't?
I believe so. And I apologize to you, I didn't bring that spreadsheet in with me. But I do remember in red, I had written, we're the lowest in this category. And then, and if you recall, and in that spreadsheet, I kind of made notes of where we were in the hunt, you know, where were you in the middle? Where we were the lowest, where we were the best. In this particular category, we were the lowest. So when I was looking at, okay, how do we remain competitive overall? This was one of the least expensive areas to address. So that's why I focused on that one for this year.
Susan, let me, let me make sure I understand. I do remember you talking about our staff do not have the long-term disability. I think that was something we need to put in place. I can agree with that. But I didn't realize that our plan is to, that employees have no payment, town is picking them up. That's, that's very different than public sector which I'm used to. We do have long-term disability, but employees participate. So it's a benefit for employees. So they should participate in that. They should pay into it again. And I really hope everybody sign up for the long-term disability because it's a great benefit, but things can happen to people. And I'm not used to everything get paid by the employer. Employees do contribute, just like health insurance, right? There's a contribution from the employees, contribution from the company or organization. Free benefits is not, I'm used to. So I'm sort of kind of thinking on that.
How many employees do we have, Susan, that would be participating in this?
Um, right now it's, this was based upon fifty five employees. I believe that when we're done with P D, we'll be at around sixty five employees.
And this, this number includes that potential number?
Um, yes, I believe so. Additional estimated, base quote additional estimate employees hired in future. So yes.
So about three hundred thirty eight dollars per?
So if you all want to propose a percentage that you would like them to pay, we'll go back to the, the, I think that if it's, if we force them to pay a percentage, then I think it has to be an optional benefit. So I'll have to go back to the company that quoted it to us and just see if that changes the quote, if it's not a mandatory benefit. So if you disindicate to me what percentage you are interested in.
If the health insurance right now is optional or that is already gets it.
You, you know, regular health insurance, is that what you mean?
Yes, ma'am.
Regular health insurance, you have to be offered and you have to opt out and you have to document that you have insurance through certain like military service. If you have health insurance through the military service, you can opt out of our plan, but we cannot disincentivize you. It, it's very specific.
Go ahead, Ms. Fina.
When it comes to health insurance, do, when it comes to our employees, do they also have to pay in? Or is it something we pick up the full cost of health insurance?
We pick up the full cost of the employee health insurance and they pay their dependent, a hundred percent of their dependent coverage.
Which is also something that, you know, I've seen in certain public sector jobs, but not necessarily, you know, the norm. I, I, I agree with, with what, what you guys are saying as far as paying in. I completely see that. That being said, this is one of those things that I think that if you ask people paying, we wouldn't get many people to sign up for it. You know, therefore, I mean, it would be a benefit that you could add. But as I look at the, the cost, and keep in mind, we're talking about a supplemental here. Because at the end of the day, I see two different revenue numbers, one of which says that we won't be able to do supplementals. One that says that we, we, we will be able to do them. Of course, we know because one, we went off what was handed to us and we don't think that's going to be the right number. So I mean, when it comes to supplementals, listen, if the money's there and we can provide supplementals for people, I'm all for it. But when it comes to, I mean, I, I'm still of the opinion that if we're going to offer this to our employees of the town, that the after-tax option is just, it's, it's not cost prohibitive. It's better for the employee. They get a better benefit because they do it after tax. Pay scale, and this is another question I might have to ask. I mean, if I'm thinking about this from a tax perspective, if I get paid an additional thirty bucks a month, that means that three hundred and sixty dollars, if that pushes me into a new tax bracket, it's literally the only the dollars that cross that tax threshold that I'm paying the additional percentage on. Now, maybe that's different for the, the, you know, the, you said pay scale. Maybe if you hit a certain pay scale, something different happens. Okay, so I mean, may, maybe it is different in the private sector versus the public sector, but the additional three hundred and twenty dollars, the tax difference would be pretty nominal, being that it pushes all of your money into that tax rate, it just pushes that portion. So, but again, you know, this is a supplemental, so as, as we get more final numbers, then I'm sure we'll have different discussions then. But yeah, I mean, I like long-term care. I've always thought that, hey, this is a benefit. If you can add it, great. I do understand there's a cost associated with it. But you know, like I said, if we went to that, down the road, but we were okay with long-term care, I would think more of the after-tax option still makes more sense to me. Because that was my thought was, is it going to be cost prohibitive? Because it is a much better benefit to the employees. So, no problem.
Susan? Are you?
Yes, I'd like to, my concern is just making sure that we have high-quality competitive wages. Basically, we have competitive wages so we can make sure that we have high-quality staff. You know, we're getting the best out there, you know, we want to be the best and I think we need to make sure that we may, you know, have that, you know, pay what's necessary and take care of people, whatever is necessary. So let's make sure, just making sure we have high-quality service. And here, are you saying that right now we're the lowest in this area? Is that just our benchmark towns or cities or is that basically everywhere?
It's our benchmark cities. It's our benchmark cities, but generally they're kind of reflective of what's going on in the market, which is I think why we pick those to benchmark. So, and they're also the ones that we're most, I think we feel like we're most likely to be competing with for employee base. So it's the same ones we used for our compensation study. We use the same, every time you ask us to benchmark something, we use the same group so that we're consistent. And, and I had sent to you all our complete, what I consider our complete benefit package. And like I said, there were some things, you know, for example, we're right in the hunt with providing for the health insurance costs. That's, was consistent across the board. You know, we were right there with everyone else. We were lower on, on some things. For example, like health insurance for families. Some cities offer a little percentage. We don't offer anything. It's completely on the employee to pay for their family's insurance. So, you know, if we're trying to recruit somebody from a city that does provide for that, you know, we're not as competitive, but there are other areas where I think we're a little bit better. So, you know, for me, it's just trying to keep us, you know, not being the absolute best, but not being the lowest either, you know, making sure we're just competitive. And that's why, you know, I have brought this forward. And in terms of being a supplemental, you know, what will happen is these will stay on this list because these are the things that we won't bake into the budget if the money isn't there to do them. And so when we get those final values, you know, what is, what we can do without raising the tax rate is when we would enter these. But if we are having to raise taxes, we would not enter these. So, you know, at the last second, we'll be manipulating that.
Thank you, Mayor Susan, and to the staff as well. I, I think when we make decisions like this, we're making them based on a lot of knowledge, not just one or two, but all of us. And I will share that we have in the long-term disability where I work at, unless you want to purchase it all on your own, outside of the actual government, you have to purchase it on your own. Also, our sick leave is cumulative, which we don't have in our town. However, the question I have is that some of the staff, maybe all the staff, can accumulate an unlimited amount of comp time. Is that right?
Yes, sir. You can only accumulate twenty four hours of comp time. And that, and the, obviously the exempt employees can't accumulate any, zero. And the non-exempt employees can accumulate twenty four hours.
Okay. Thank you. Because I know we had once, one member that had several hundred hours.
Yeah, when I came on board, we took the exempt employee comp away because, I mean, it doesn't make any sense. And then I don't know when the other part was changed. It was prior to me coming here.
Okay. And the other, the other point I want to make, just, just for comparison, our sick leave, we paid a percentage of it. Basically, what I'm saying is none of ours was paid for. So we're comparing what's happening inside of the circle of people in this town. Not everybody's getting free healthcare. Not everybody's getting free long-term disability. It is paid for in part by the employees. I'm not saying that's what we should do, but I think when we make the decisions, we capture everybody in the community so that we are representing those ideas as well. One, one question I had, and it just went blank, so bear with me just a second. The question was, it says sixty day met life. Is this sixty days of long-term disability at a time collectively? Or is this throughout the year? Or is it the life of the policy?
I believe the sixty days is, it doesn't kick in until that period of time. So you would use your sick time for the first sixty days and then after sixty days it would kick in.
So what's, what is the, how long is the long-term disability? Is it endless or does it go for?
I apologize. I don't know. I think it has to do with medical, the medical determination, but I'm not an expert on this. Gretchen's been working on that.
I, I think one of the things I've experienced in, in some other industry is that I'd like to know what the the end game on that number is. It starts at sixteen, ends at no more than X?
I'm told Gretchen's on the line. Gretchen, are you able to comment on that?
Yeah, give me, if you can give me just a second, let me pull it, pull it, pull it up.
Well, Gretchen's looking for that number. Another question I have about the policy is can you retire and retire on long-term disability as well? Can you retire, but then actually retire on long-term disability? Because there are provisions where people can retire on long-term disability, but they're actually retired. And that adds a whole nother mathematical complication into a long-term disability. It depends on where you're working at. It, it depends on how they process the data. So that's what I'm asking for. What are we getting for the bang of the buck? Is this, is this something that we're going to pay for that's going to cost us in retirement and long-term disability? Is this something we're going to pay for, but it only goes for ninety days? It seems to me like most long-term disabilities, there's, there's an end policy date, long-term disability, not exceed X number of days or weeks. So that's what I'm looking for. What do we actually find here or being proposed to the policy?
She's looking for it. I'm just going to circle back around. You had asked me a question about what did the comparator cities do? And seven of the eleven cities pay for full-time employees for the long-term disability. So just to, you know, that was one of the questions that you had asked. And if, Gretchen, if you don't have it, we can, we're happy to bring this back the next meeting and get some of your questions answered. And if you want to propose a percentage that we check into or, we're very open to whatever suggestions that you all have.
Again, I just want to be clear, right? I'm not, when you brought this up, we don't have L T D. I thought that's something we should have, especially with the, with the emergency service people. I thought we need to have it. But I'm, only thing I'm opposed to is benefits need to be paid into. I, I don't know what's the industry standard. If you have some numbers, I don't know, sixty five, thirty five, I don't know, fifty, fifty. I had no idea. Maybe you should be able to do some, ask the same consultant. Not, not for the government. Obviously, everything is free, right? I understand that. But they may be, they may be able to give some other industry standard. So all I'm saying is, I get the benefit and it help some stake in the game. That's really all I'm saying. So all I'm saying is, I get the benefit and it helps some stake in the game. That's really all I'm saying.
Go ahead.
Susan?
Yes, Gretchen.
So the, the benefit duration is for, so, um, until you can reach social, social security, no normal retirement age.
So if they retire, then, um, we, the benefit stops, or please transition onto social security, the benefit.
Correct.
Thank you.
So just, just to role play. We have an officer that's injured and he's forty years old. He can't draw social security to sixty-five. He'd be a long-term disability for twenty-five years. At the same time, though, he'd be drawing twenty-five years of, uh, years of pension at the same time.
Well, if he retires, to draw his pension, he would retire. So it sounds like, and we can clarify and make a hundred percent sure, but it sounds like if he retires and is drawing his pension, which is how he draws his pension is by retiring, then the long-term disability stops, is I think what she just said.
But he'd be a long-term disability for potentially twenty, twenty-five years until he reaches social security and then draw pension.
No, to draw his pension, he would, we have a provision, and Gretchen, if you can chime in, that there is a provision for retiring due to disability. So, I mean, that is what happens sometimes as well, that they could retire and draw their pension down. Correct, Gretchen?
Yes.
We thought that happened.
Yeah, we haven't seen it happen, but it is a possibility.
I've seen it happen in other cities.
Yeah, it could happen. I just want to know what we're buying, because potentially you have somebody on your payroll, but now you're having a backfill, and you're paying for two salaries for.
And it would also depend upon if they were hurt on the job, because if they're hurt on the job, it's workman's comp. So, I mean, that's a difference when you're injured.
No, I, I get that, but we're still paying the salary. And then because that person couldn't pay for, if, if that person's on long-term disability.
Keep in mind, I'd have to figure out.
I don't believe that's not how, I, I think someone very close to me will know. And see what happens is you stop getting your salary from the company. You start getting your long-term care. And the reason why it's a great benefit to do after taxes, is the money that they don't pay taxes. So we wouldn't be paying them so much as they're getting paid by the, uh, insurance company.
No, I didn't, I'm going to catch that, but since they're still on our payroll. Would they be, well, they are on paper, but would they still be acquiring, occurring benefits? Would they still be occurring annual leave? I just want, I just want to see what the, what's, what the, how that, how that would impact our town potentially long-term. Okay, very good. Thanks, Susan.
I, I just want to make sure that it's not just my opinion, really. I want Eldred and Egan, you have any comments? You may please speak. I just don't want this to be just my comment, sorry, because this is majority rules. Yeah, I understand that.
So Susan, when you said we're lowest in this category, you mean the overall benefits category or just disability?
Just in the disabilities. So what we did was we took and created a matrix of all the major benefits. TMRS, health insurance, health insurance for families, you know, um, leave, all that kind of stuff. And then we did a survey of all of our benchmark cities. So, um, it became apparent on that matrix that seven out of eleven of the cities did offer long-term disability. Some also offered short-term. We kind of didn't put that forward because we do have a lot of employees who make sick time, so they have enough to get to the sixty days. So I didn't propose that, but I did feel like long-term disability, it is an issue. And so, um, we proposed that one. And again, there were other areas that were the lowest, um, in the entire matrix, but we did not bring those categories for this year. I just chose one, just try to make some incremental improvement to be mo- most competitive in the market. So I did not look at everything we were lowest in. I just brought this one forward this year.
I think our overall salary infringement benefits package is competitive, those around us. Does it affect our ability to hire at all?
Yeah, definitely. Um, it's, it definitely affects our ability to hire. Um, there's a couple of categories that we're the lowest in, and it does affect us. I think in terms of pay, we're probably in, in the hunt, kind of in the middle. Um, I just was looking at, you know, police officer pay. And, you know, there's so much that goes into that, like where, um, where they're patrolling. This is a nice community to work in, so, you know, there's a lot of intangibles that you have to include. But, you know, just, I was looking on the TML website under job postings. It's really nice when you, and I encourage you to go out and do that, to see how many cities are hiring, what they're hiring for, and what they're paying, and what their benefits are, because it's all on the posting. And like right beside our police officer posting was for another community paying ten thousand dollars more for entry, you know, the patrol officers. So, you know, how do the rest of their benefits stack up? It's, it's a matrix. It's not one thing. And gosh, they get to work for us, right? So, you know, that's invaluable. So, um, but, but I am, you know, I am very cognizant of it. And we hear different things, and I think for every person, it's different. You know, for a person who has, you know, a big family, this might not be the right decision because we, in the, you know, maybe they don't have, um, a partner that works that also is contributing to the insurance situation. So, you know, for every person, it's different, and we're trying to find things that appeal to them. Um, and it, and not every candidate is it going to be a match, but some of them, it will be. You know, a lot of our police, uh, candidates are people who have retired from other cities. And, you know, if you're in a city or a university or something where you can retire at twenty, you're only forty years old. And so that's still, you've got twenty more years of working, but that makes that financially a good choice for them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Egan, do you have any comments, sir?
Well, my only thought is, this year it's a supplemental. And unless you pull it away next year, you know, turn it on, turn it off, turn it on, turn it off. Once it gets built, baked into the budget, it's always going to be there. I think that we need to have a better idea. I mean, it's good that we've got the numbers that we've got now, because we, we know it's sixteen grand. I think it was right there, somewhere in that area. Uh, but what's it going to be next year, particularly if we have, God forbid, a building collapse on top of three firefighters that, that put them on long-term disability, uh, that our premium's going to go up, uh, potentially. And that, some of that stuff, I mean, that can always happen, but I think it needs to be baked in. What, uh, this is a short-term plan, it's one year. We need to see what the long-term repercussion could be. Forgetting that anybody gets hurt, just what, what are the possible long-term projections of what this cost is going to be? Because once we turn it on, it's on. Uh, you know, it's kind of hard to pull away a benefit. The other thing is, and I know that matrix that you're talking about, and I understand the difficulty of the matrix and how you arrive at. Where's the dot in the center of the circle that gives you the best bang for the buck for the, what the people out there are going to want? Um, I think we've just got to study that, uh, a little bit harder. And I know you, you barely have enough hours in the day as it is, Susan, so I totally understand that. As well as Liz and, and Gretchen and Phyllis and the ones that look at those factors. Not to discount any of the rest of the employees who could have that ability to analyze and assess. But I think that we've got to paint the bright picture. And if long-term disability is a part of what that, that paint looks like, what that picture looks like. I can, I can do it provided we're physically responsible, and you've heard me say that over and over again. Physical responsibility is our number one goal. I, I think it is of the seven of us that are sitting up here. Uh, and I don't think any one of us, uh, in the time that I've been on council, whether it be this group of council members or previous ones. Uh, have we ever said no to doing something that needs to be done? It just has to be properly justified and physically responsible of the people's money, is what it boils down to, and I'm not sure we're there yet. Maybe there's just more, Mr. Allen asked some good questions of Mr. Finch. Uh, there's some good, um, evaluation that was made here, some good questions that were made. I just don't, if I were to vote on this, then I'd probably say no, at least for that, that particular supplemental. That doesn't mean, though, that I'm against our employees. I want our employees to have the best that we can possibly afford to give them. That, you know, and I apologize, Mayor, one, for my real quick little ramble here, but, you know, some of the people that are first urged me to get involved with what was going on in the town. I made the comment to them that, and this is a weird thing to think about, but I kind of felt like that, that there's no vehicle in the town should be driven. That, except for emergency vehicles, that is any newer than the average age of the vehicles that the rest of the population that they serve. It's almost exactly what Mr. Allen was talking about a minute ago. Uh, with regard to what, what our employees get with the town, the life our employees live as being a part of the town through their being employed, shouldn't be any better or any worse than the population that they're serving. And that's kind of where I'm thinking about this. I've always had to pay for long-term disability when I worked for a, a employer. Uh, and, and I, I think that's where Mr. Finch was going and Mr. Allen's was going as well. Um, and I've worked for several companies over my career. Fortunately, I don't have to do that no more. But, um, I just think we need to think through it a little bit more, maybe determine if the elderly, uh, long-term disability is the right one to be picking, or are there some other ones in there that may have a bigger bang for the buck? Uh, that also makes that picture a little bit prettier for the potential employee.
Just for the record, I don't use my truck as an average for, uh, our town vehicles.
Well, I got a motor home and a Jeep. It might be your truck.
Okay, and we did, um, kind of digress of Liz's presentation, so there are slides beyond this slide. So if I can turn it back over to her, if we're done.
So, Mr. Finch, do you have a comment or something?
One more consideration, because we, sorry, Liz, to labor this, but, um, I wonder if we look at a couple of options, Susan, and I have no idea what percentages would be. So I'd look for staff to give us some guidance on that, if we did a split. But also, a, a split from, because obviously, you know, I have some affinity for this, the people that serve us and these high-risk jobs. If we looked at, um, providing that as a benefit to these higher-risk positions, our public safety positions, because I think they have the greater risk of, of utilizing this benefit. It's not to say that any other job is less important, but I think their risks are much higher. And so I would look at, maybe we look at that from a, a public safety offering to start there. And I don't know what that does for our premiums, but maybe just something to consider. As we look for options, right?
We'll, we'll break that more information to you in the future.
Thank you.
Sorry, Ms. Hopkins.
Sorry, do you have any other questions on any of, any of the supplementals not yet covered?
I guess not.
Okay, if we move to the next slide, I apologize, this kind of got thrown in the wrong spot. This is going back to, um, not our proposed budget, but our current budget, but it is a good slide. Um, what this, um, portrays is all of that, that money that came in and the projects that it is supporting. And what we believe our current year costs will be. And again, I think Lyle, Lyle and Susan both took a stab at the timing of, um, you know, these costs. So that, that's the information slide for you, really. The next slide. You've seen, uh, I believe you've seen this before. This is again in support of the five-year, um, CIP budget that is required by Charter. And again, Lyle helped me with this. Basically, uh, these are your currently funded projects. And, uh, what we think, the, the timing of the money has already been determined. That's the top part. And how the money's going to go out to the projects is the bottom part. And those are our best estimates at this time. This is how we track, um, the five-year plans.
So, Ms. Hopkins, the very last of the brown one, major infrastructure improvements, TBD COs. What, what is, can you, sorry, remind me again, what is that?
We have, um, a couple of projects that we wrote down for that. Um, I'm sorry, Susan, you might have.
So the question, do we, do we already have funding for that?
Yeah, if you recall, when we issued that CO, we, um, at the time that we issued it, it was not clear if we were going to do the, reinforce the banks at Barnes Bridge. And so this is some gap money, but I can tell you right off the bat. Um, this potentially could be used for, um, closing the gap on the design cost of Collins Road Phase Two. This could also potentially be used for, if we don't end up with those reserve days that we talked about, those extra reserve days, this could fund the contract for USAD that we have to do with TechSOT. So, um, the other thing is if we don't end up getting that grant, um, that I've referred to in the past. Um, if we're going to do the core, the, what do you call it, subgrade for Collins Road, you know, at your direction, we got core samples of Trip Road.
Trip Road, okay.
Thank you, sorry. Um, we did core samples of Trip Road. The subbase is very bad. And so if we're going to do the, um, PSA with Dal- Dallas County, we really need at our expense to go in and redo the subgrade, or we're just going to be having it fall off the edges right away again. So right now, we're working on getting a quote and kind of a prescription for what needs to happen there in order, um, to move forward with the PSA, because I don't want to do it if it's going to fall apart again. So all of, when we see miscellaneous projects, those are all things, um, that could be funded in that brownie-orange bar.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Mayor, ask a quick question on that. Did, does Dallas County do the subgrade, or are we going to have to contract that out?
So they will grind it up and haul it, is my understanding. We'll have to get a new PSA cost, but we're going to have to work with them and others to figure out what's going to be put down. And we're in the middle of that process right now. Lyle went out and walked it with the company this last week. Um, who's going to kind of give us this prescription of what really needs to happen? But it would just be throwing good money after bad. Is that the right phrase? For us to go and just resurface it again? So we need to address it, and I think somebody just came up to me before the meeting and said they're already seeing that happen on Nance. We know we're already seeing it on Jobson. So we've got to start trying to fix these correctly. So that's what we're working on right now.
Right, that, that was me, uh, you know, I just, I was on Nance yesterday, and that has very little, little traffic, but already it's starting to slide off, and it just looks terrible. I mean, similar to how Jobson looks, you know, how it started looking about three weeks after it was finished. So I think we need to try to figure out a better way to do this.
I just want to say, for somebody that's lived in this general area for about sixty years, maybe a little less. None of these roads were ever built to be what they are today. They were, Collins Road, as you may have seen when they've been tearing it up to do the work over here. It wasn't even here back in the late sixties. They just put it down in about sixty-eight or sixty-nine. When I first rode my bicycle out to Lakebury Hubbard when I was in the seventh grade, we came back from, from the, what was then, what was going to be Lakebury Hubbard, in the dam and drove down Trip Road and made the zig, the zigzag Z to go past what was the old filling station, which is now where the circle is going to be, filling station and grocery store. And Collins didn't exist. None of this stuff was built with any long-range future involved because the perspective of the town is we're always going to be a country, rural, living community. So we, we've been in need to spend the money. I don't care, the, the work that we did on, on Trip and on Town East, uh, to a certain degree, what was done on Nance over the past recent few years. The, the plan with Dallas County was they would take it down to base, send it all out, get it ground up, and then bring it right, and in some cases, they would do any work to the base that needed to be done. But they really weren't going to take the base out and truly rebuild the base. Couldn't afford to do that. But we just have to have an understanding that, uh, like, like a lot of things in the town that just got put on the back burner. We are now trying to get caught up. We've been pedaling that bicycle as fast as we can, I know, for the past three or four years. And this group here, we've been doing it even more so. And at least now, our plans that we've put together through the CIP committee and the work that we've done there, it's going to take a while, but we're going to be better off once we get to the end of the five-year period and probably the end of the ten-year period, and it's probably going to take that long. Because there is so much work that needs to be done. We're making the right choices today, and we're asking the right questions today. But I just wanted to bring that out, that none of this was, these were old country farm roads. And there was nothing ever done to them to make them any better than just overtopping old country farm roads.
Thanks for speaking, Michelle.
Mayor, Susan, follow-up question to the base. Is this base going to also, and Lyle, you may have to weigh in, but maybe you don't have the answer. Is this going to change the way we do bases on our concrete as well? On our concrete roads? And, and you don't have to go into deep discussion. I just know we have problems with our concrete roads and I was wondering if that's going to be an issue there.
Sorry for the feedback. Can you hear me okay? Um, all I can really speak to, you know, right now at this point, the roads that, like, for example, Collins Road, we're reconstructing right out here right now. The subgrade, the old subgrade is removed, it's compacted, it's lime cement stabilized. We're going above and beyond to make sure that the, the town gets a good bang for its buck on these new roads that we're putting in now. And future roads as we move forward, we will continue to do.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Again, just a reminder, when we met us at strategic session, we told Lyle to go to a one-mile-ish testing. For Lyle, sir, that time, if you don't do the, the geotech studies on it and come back and make some proper upgrading, two hundred people, and he was fine. And we told him to go do one-mile pilot. If you like what we get, then we decided that time, what do we do from here on? That's what you're trying to do, right? Yes, sir. Thanks. So, I'd like to.
Um, the very last slide, not the very last, but the next slide, please. This is your utility fund. These, this is your Harris Edition sewer lines. These are current projects that are funded. And the following slides are your income reports. And it is for every fund that we presented to you, uh, both original budgets, amended budgets, proposed budgets. Actual year-to-date, there's a lot of information in there. We strive to put a note in every line item. So as you go through this, if you see something and you're like, what is that or why is that? And there's not a note there, please let us know because we really want to make sure we're thorough on that. And all answers, any questions you have?
I can do, before the council gets to it, I'm going to open up our public comments. If anyone from the members of the audience would like to speak to the council on item number 11. Uh, please come forward. Uh, if anyone from the, anyone calling in via Zoom, I'd speak to the council, please raise your hand. Now, when it's coming forward from the, from the chamber, uh, Joseph, anyone raising their hand?
No, there's not.
No hands raised, we're going to post the public comments. Council, are there any questions or further discussions on item number 11? Susan, is there any action or is this more of a discussion?
Just a discussion. Um, and then we'll be back with your special meeting next week.
It's Monday, six o'clock. Anything else, Ms. Hopkins? Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you. Okay, if nothing else, I'm moving on to item number 12. Discuss, consider and act upon an item to create the excellence in local government committee. I request that council members forward suggestions to, suggestions for membership to the town manager. Ms. Catherine?
Yes, sir. Um, it was at your request that we put together a charter for this committee. Um, and it was really following some of the recent, um, major events in the world. And, you know, the focus of this committee will be, um, to assess and learn about town processes and procedures and make recommendations to the town on improvements to enhance customer service, public participation, diversity and matters of equitable treatment. Um, I have received many, um, suggestions of membership and kind of the point of this committee is to look at more policy recommendations and to look at staff procedures. And then make recommendations to both of these bodies. Um, and so we are, um, I, I do recommend possibly a subcommittee of you that work more closely on reviewing that list of members and making from that list a final recommendation to bring back to council of members to appoint to this committee. So, um, with that, what we would be doing today is just voting to create the committee, but not actually appoint the members until the next meeting.
Can I open up our public comments? If anyone from the members of the audience would like to speak to the council, please come forward. If you're calling in via Zoom, please raise your hand. Now, when it's coming for, forward from the chamber, Joseph, anyone raising their hands?
No hands raised.
No hands raised. I'm going to post the public comments, council. Uh, Susan, I know you did a lot of work on it and I thank you so much uh, for pulling this charter together. I know she has sent this out to everybody's review and there are some comments. Um, I think she incorporated those comments she received, uh, from the members. Uh. It's very important that we, uh, recommend names. Uh, again, when you look at it, there are broad spectrum of people, right? We want to make sure we get every perspective. That means you know your constituents more than anybody else. Susan, Susan knows a lot, but not everybody. And I know a lot of people, but I don't know everybody. So make sure that you recommend people. I know many of you recommended a bunch of people. So I think two things here, um, it's going to come back when, two weeks after, Susan?
Um, yeah, we probably won't bring it at this special meeting, but in the two-week meeting, we'll bring back that list. So if you would recommend, um, maybe yourself and one other member to work with me to pare that list down and just make sure that we're really looking at it, um, to make sure it's a diverse group of people and always. Um, that would be really helpful to me.
Okay. Uh, again, that is to down-select the list to some manageable number. Yes, sir. Michelle? Oh, okay. Uh, okay. So it's down-select to some manageable number and come back to the council. Um, are there any volunteers who want to participate in the down-selection? Mr. Eldridge, okay?
Do you need one or two?
Don't have more than three. You have three, otherwise it would be a problem. It's going to come back to the council. Everybody get to, everybody get to choose, right?
I, I defer that off tomorrow then. If you want to do that, I'll defer after tomorrow.
Mr. Finch, you want to be part of it? Just asking. Okay, so two people. Mr. Freeman?
Let Mr. Freeman raise his hand eagerly.
All right, okay. So we will have, uh, uh, so I'm going to ask that Susan by what, where is still this week? Uh, just turn in any additional candidates if you would like to send in. Uh, it's very important that you submit names to be part of the council, so, I mean, subcommittee. Uh, then, uh, set up a meeting with us sometime next week, probably.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, first, please make yourself available. Again, the goal is to down-select and come back to the council. So with that, um, are there any questions on the charter of the committee? Okay, so can I have a motion with respect to item number 12, please?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve item number 12.
It was made by Mr. Allen, second by Mr. Eldridge to approve item number 12 as presented. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed, seven oh. Moving on to item number 13, discuss, consider and act upon adding a council member to serve on the Glacier Committee. That's you, Ms. Catherine?
Yes, sir. Um, on this item, I have kind of a long history, I won't go through it, of when we purchased the property and kind of what's happened. But the gist of it is, is that there is a citizen committee that was originally appointed by council to look at, and this really has more to do with kind of the horse side of things, the barn, the use of that property. Um, originally, there were two council members who were on that committee. It was Cara Ranta and, um, Jim Wade. But because both of them are now off of council, council is no longer represented on that committee. And so, um, I was just recommending, the committee is kind of gearing back up because we now have kind of, we're working with architects, we have a preliminary drawing of the barn, we need to work on the programming and kind of it'll start working its way back up to you. So I felt it important that we reappoint one member at least of council to serve on that committee. So your interests are represented, um, on that committee and that there's good communication, um, back and forth. So.
Mr. Finch?
Nominate Mr. Clark to serve on this committee.
That's it.
Mr. Clark, can you open it?
I would be happy to serve on the Glacier Committee.
So, but we had to, uh, before we get there, and I appreciate that, we still had to open up for public comments here, sorry. Thank you very much for the recommendation. I'll come back to it.
Do, do we want to add two? We originally had two people.
But we still have them two. We still have them, right?
Yeah, they, they are.
How many do we have now, Susan? You're trying to get to an odd number, that's what you're trying to do, not even number.
Yeah, right now the members include Nikki Anthony, who's a current 4B member. Michael Giordano was a former 4B president, Cara Ranta and Jim Wade.
So one will make it five. It's a good number. Okay, we're going to open up for public comments. If anyone from the members of the audience would like to speak to the council, please come forward. If anyone speak, uh, calling in via Zoom want to raise their hands, uh, please do so. Now, when it's coming forwards, we're going to post, uh, I'm going to, uh, now it's coming from the chamber. Joseph, anyone raising their hand?
No hands raised.
Going to post the public comments, council. Now it's time for additional discussions.
I'll reiterate my nomination.
All right, so is that the way the procedure should be? Somebody nominate, right? Okay, so I have a nomination, uh, from, uh, Mr. Finch. And second by Mr. Allen to appoint Mr. Clark, uh, to the committee. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed, seven oh. Moving on to item number 13, discuss, sorry, 14. Discuss, consider and act upon appointing additional members to the downtown committee. Ms. Catherine, please.
Yes, sir. Um, if you recall, um, in December of 2018, the town council voted to establish a downtown committee to explore the potential of fostering a downtown area for Sunny Bell. At that time, membership was comprised of a council member and representatives from 4A and 4B. Um, subsequently, a second council was added to the committee. The current members are Larry Allen, Kevin Clark, Nikki Anthony from 4B, Michael Giordano, who was, um, on 4B?
With the form of 4B.
Yeah. Um, Terry Shatter, and I'm just pausing there because a part of me feels like she may have resigned from the committee, but I'm going to circle back around to make sure. Um, K. Paul Cash, um, myself, and then the EDC Director Burton Barr, those are the current members. But when you held your strategic planning retreat, um, in January, you all named the establishment of a downtown as one of your major goal areas. And so based upon that, you also said that you wanted to expand upon that committee to get a broader cross-section of input from the community. So we did ask for your nominations of members who might be added to the committee. Um, I, some of you called and just kind of rattled off a whole bunch of names. So I jotted them all down. Um, but I cross-referenced them to people who were on other committees. So the list here of recommendations are based upon people who weren't already serving on another committee. Although how this now might cross-pollinate with the excellence in local government committee, I didn't check that. So Sam Pendyala, I'm saying that right, Pendyala, um, Ruben Thomas, Lauren Becker, Paul Bachmeier, Abby Rahah, Carvin Ayo, those are the people that we're recommending that we would add to this committee at this time.
Susan, if my memory serves me right, you already confirmed with them and they agreed to be a member of this committee, am I right?
That's correct, sir.
Let me open up our public comments. Uh, if anyone from the members of the audience would like to speak to the council on item number 14, uh, please come forward. But if you're calling in via Zoom, please raise your hand. Now, when it's coming forward from the members of the audience, uh, council, uh, Joseph, anyone raising their hand?
No hands raised.
No hands raised. We're going to post the public comments. Council, there are some proposed names and I think, um, Catherine reached out to every one of them. They all agreed to be a part of this committee. What are your comments or discussions?
Mayor, I think this is a good group of people that, uh, if they've all volunteered and confirmed, then, uh, I would recommend that we accept all of them. Unless we have a limit on the committee, I don't know that we do.
No, I think we felt like we wanted it broader and bigger.
It's going to be a tough project. This is, this is the ambition for 20, 30 years. So the broader the committees, good enough. Mr. Clark, you have, Mr. Clark, you have a comment?
I, I agree with, uh, Councilmember Allen. I, I, I'm happy to see more people on this committee because it is a very important committee. That's a very important topic they were discussing. So more involvement would be great. And, um, you know, excited to see the downtown project move forward.
Are there additional comments or discussions? So Susan, we do make an appointment here, right? So we approve the agenda, is that what it is?
Yes, sir.
I'll make it all of them. Okay. Uh, council, there are no additional discussions. Can I have a motion with respect to item number 14?
Mayor, I'll make the motion to, uh, approve item number 17 with the additional six names as listed. 14, I'm sorry, item 14 with additional six names as posted.
Motion made by, uh, Mr. Allen, second by Eldridge. Susan, one exception maybe, uh, is, uh, this shadow. You're going to confirm. So, Alan and, uh, Eldridge, you're okay? If she come back and say she just want to be, you're okay, they're moving it? Council, you heard the motion. Are there additional discussions? There are none. Uh, all in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed, seven oh. Uh, moving on to item number 15, this is for Chief Hox. Receive status update regarding the timeline and implementation of the police department. Chief Hox?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Yes, sir.
I can't see y'all, so I hope you can see me.
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me? Okay.
You're looking good.
We are 100%. We are, uh, 100% operational as of, um, last week. In fact, we made our first arrest today at about 5:20. Uh, we are operating two shifts, uh, a day shift and evening shift, four officers on each shift, uh, Monday through Friday right now. We have a test coming up, our third entrance test, um, this Saturday to fill our remaining positions. And we're waiting for the 911 transfer and we'll be ready.
And again, we, uh, read in the, uh, on the Friday news that they're already requested Dallas County to stop the, the
Yeah, according to our contract, we sent them our 60-day notice.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions or, Chief, Mr. Finch?
So, uh, to your point, Chief, what's the timeline on the transition of 911? Or is there just procedural things we have to wait on? Or what are we kind of waiting on for that? And Susan, you may have to answer that.
Um.
Yeah, Susan probably can answer that.
Yeah, so dispatch, you know, is kind of a separate thing. That's already working. We're up and running on that. I mean, thanks to the chief and Segalville's cooperation and, uh, particularly Joseph had a massive undertaking to get that all going. Um, on the 911 side, we have sent out all of our contracts. Um, as, as of August 1st, we'll be doing follow-up calls on those contracts to make sure we get them back. And within that contract is directions to all the carriers about how to switch and how to test. We also are still awaiting our contract with NCT 911, which is the cog. Um, we've been following up periodically, but their board actually voted to approve entering into that contract with us. The holdup is drafting of the contract and I have communicated with their attorney who said it's underway and you know, all is well. It's just, you know, they're trying, I guess we're kind of the first of our type. So, um, all the other people who are contracted with them are, when they originally, back in the 80s, they were designated to be with them. Um, but we weren't and we are now our own 911. they were designated to be with them, but we weren't, and we are now our own 911 entity. So now we're a 911 entity contracting with them. So it's a little complicated, and it's just a different contract. It's not the boil boilerplate contract. So that's what's taking a little bit of time. They had told me they thought they'd have that to me by the end of July. We're not quite there yet, so, you know, we'll follow up with them when that date arrives.
Thank you. And I heard you say that they're doing dispatch, they're doing dispatch for fire as well. So we're getting fire from, are we still relying on Dallas County to dispatch fire?
Yes.
Because of 911?
Yes.
And if there, if there's a delay for some reason, when, when the Sheriff's Department's no longer with us, and this may be happening now, will they transfer calls to, to Segalville for us? And then they dispatch, or how will that work? Is that what, okay, I see you nodding, Chief, thank you. Okay, that's perfect. And by the way, I love your summer uniforms. They're, they look great. Scott and them came in, so they look good, so thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, I'm, just wanted to tell you, I'm hearing positive things in our community about the police department already, so, well done, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if you heard that earlier, we had some positive comments on social media about your traffic enforcement, people, actually citizens saying thank you for that, so I don't know if you saw that, so, good job on that.
Thank you.
For sure, we do hear good comments. Are there any comments? Do I take public comments on this, Susan? Okay. Okay. Council, additional questions for Chief? If, if anything else? Thank you for everything you do and all the offices for working with us. Moving on to item number 16, mayor, council requests for future staff updates and agenda items. Council? There are none.
Actually, actually, Mayor, I have one.
Mr. Allen?
Sorry about that.
Yes, sir.
I, I don't know if this is possible, Susan and Joseph. Can the Zoom on that camera be adjusted so we can get whoever's on the side councilman's seats in the view? And I noticed they're not in the view. Maybe they don't want to be in the view either, but I think it'd be good if we can, if it's possible, adjust the Zoom so that we can get them in there. If not, I understand.
Catch them sleeping, that's what. Again, staff, I just want to say, a lot of work, a lot of budget-wise, a lot of activities going on. Phyllis, Liz, Susan, you are, I don't know how you manage it, but I appreciate what you're doing. And Chief, thank you for everything you do, and Rachel, thanks for everything you do. And Lyle, you got a lot in your, in your, in your plate. It's going to get better, right? Joseph, thanks for keeping this going, appreciate it. Everybody else, Barton and Rashad, everybody, thank you. Okay, if there are no other comments, now I'm going to call for a motion to adjourn. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So I got.
Motion made by Mr. Finch, second by Mr. Clark for adjourn. Meeting for today, July 27th, now time is, all in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed, 7-0. Now time is 8:59, and the meeting is adjourned.